Let's call the order of the regular business meeting, the Board of Education for Monday, October 23. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the Board and administration take their seats.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Jack Grudy.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Moose.
Here.
Karen Munstead.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Max Serman.
Here.
Okay, so we know Jim Batson asking for the record. There's going to be a modification to the agenda tonight with the addition of a closed session to discuss employment of an employee. That's five ILCS 120/2C1. So we will do that at the end of the meeting. There's no plan for any action after that executive session or closed session. All right? Other than that, our agenda tonight, we will have, we'll open it up for public comment. Then we have some student recognition and an update on our later start task force. We've been getting a lot of questions in the community about our later start initiatives. So we've had a task force working on that for some time, so we're going to review the progress of that tonight. We'll have updates from our student school board representatives, superintendent's report, including an update on the pool. And then we have the consent vote agenda, which was reviewed earlier this month in committees. Program personnel update, facilities and finance committee update. Are you going to have an update, Scott, on property?
Just a quick one.
Okay.
Something.
And then SEDOL, then? Nothing from SEDOL, nothing from IASB. And then again, we'll have a closed session right after agenda. All right? Ready? Let us start with, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak?
A member of the audience walks to the podium to address the Board.
I was hiding behind the screen.
There you go, Steve.
Good evening. Steve Mitchell, 14645 South Somerset Circle in Green Oaks. It is very exciting to see the first signs of construction beginning at the LHS site for the new natatorium. I want to again thank the district administration and this Board of Education, both present and in the past, for your vision, persistence, due diligence, and commitment to making this project a reality. Project planning was very detailed, and fortunately, the bidding process was successful to allow some significant alternates to also be included in the project's scope. Also express appreciation to the community at large for their support of this initiative, and especially to the students, faculty, and parents of LHS for their patience and flexibility as the construction phase begins. We should all anticipate a great outcome and a wonderful new community asset when the natatorium is complete. Additionally, it is also appropriate in general to express appreciation to this administration and to the Board for your continuing efforts to raise the bar and deliver outstanding programming excellence for our students. Each of you have accepted the responsibility of your roles, understood the challenges of your duties, and seek effective means to continuously improve the governance and management of the district, including enhancing communication and transparency. I believe the majority of the community recognizes and acknowledges your commitment and focus in setting goals, measuring results, supporting innovative educational opportunities, and ultimately acting as good stewards of the resources available to prepare our students for future success in this quickly changing world. Thank you for your time and service.
Okay, thanks, Steve. And thanks for all of your commitment over, it's got to be three or four years, working with us to plan the pool and do that. You've been a tremendous asset to the team as we put that project together. All right, anybody else?
The Board waits for a member of the audience to approach.
Okay. So let's start with our student recognition. It sounds more exciting, Best Buddies.
Dr. Tom Kuhlendes introduces...
For Best Buddies, we're going to have Zach Ford come up and do a presentation about this wonderful program. Oh, and Zach will be joined by Hannah as well.
Hi.
Hi, Zach.
Hi there.
Zach and Hannah approach the podium.
All right. Hi, my name's Hannah. I'm one of the presidents of Best Buddies here with Zachary, and we are so thankful to be here today. So if you don't know, Best Buddies is an organization that is actually international, and we have a club at Libertyville. And it is an organization that works with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So we work on friendship, inclusion, and really just, yeah, it's pretty awesome. So, sorry, could you, do we have a clicker?
No.
Oh, okay. So we're here because last year for the 2016-2017 school year, Libertyville was recognized as the chapter of the year for Illinois, which is a really big deal, super awesome. It was a great opportunity for us. And because of that, we got an outstanding award from Best Buddies International. So we were given two awards within a really short amount of time, and, you know, it was really awesome to be able to be recognized.
Photos of Best Buddies presidents are on screen.
And so a big part of our recognition that Best Buddies International kind of gave us an award for was just our ability to promote inclusion throughout the school community. So we have a lot of our buddies here with us today. And a big thing that they highlighted and what our chapter is successful with is our ability to make all these students just truly feel welcome to LHS. And so a big objective of Best Buddies is their one-to-one matches that they form with the buddies and other students at the community. So, can I have you go to the next slide? Awesome, thank you. So what this looks like is one of our buddies is matched with another student throughout the year, a student or two. And really, it's just their job to form just what we call like a non-ending friendship, basically. And so throughout the year, all the students are able to go to our different meetings, which happen every other Thursday. And these are just a place for our students to come after school and gather, just kind of as a community with each other. And as you can see, we play just crazy field games. This is our parachute, this is a tradition we do every year. And at some of our other meetings, we'll have different holiday parties or do just kind of minute-to-win-it games, just to really get some of the buddies kind of out of their shell and having a lot of fun and just, I think what we all like to consider their element, I guess.
Yeah, so the next couple of slides are just pictures of some of our meetings. I was window painting last year. Yeah, so that's our Halloween party and our minute-to-win-it games. So our, at our meetings, we really just try to promote an atmosphere of just being undeniably yourself, and as you can see, that's exactly what we try to do in everything that we do. And as Zachary was saying, it really works to not only get our buddies out of ourselves, but the people who participate in it that are not part of our buddy program. It's really been amazing to see just the transition of everyone involved.
Photos of past Best Buddies events are on screen.
Yeah, so again, those are just some more pictures, but in addition to kind of our meetings, we have a couple of bigger events that not only affect the school, but we really try and just kind of accent the community in order to bring awareness to some of the students with disabilities in our community. So if we could go to the next couple of slides, we have pictures of some of these. One more. Awesome. So these are examples of some of our peer buddy events. And what our peer buddy events are, is that is the students who are paired one-on-one with some of our buddies. For example, this month, we have pumpkin painting over at Hannah Hutchins' house, where all the buddies and all of the matched come together and just gather, gather as a community. But in addition, we have a Best Buddies prom, which happens annually here actually at Vernon Hills High School. So that's awesome because not only do our buddies get to just have a fun night with their friends, but they also get to interact with other students with different disabilities who they may not always see. So there's a really cool social aspect for these buddies as well. In addition, kind of towards the end of the winter, early spring, we have a slide for it if we jump ahead of, there we go, our carnival. So this is a huge fundraising event for us, and in the years past, it has been super, super successful. And a big reason is we invite other Best Buddies chapters from local schools, so whether it be Grayslake Central, Vernon Hills, of course, or other schools in the community, just to come and see what we as Best Buddies really stand for. And again, it's just another opportunity. There's tons of fun games and opportunities for our buddies just to kind of put themselves out there in the community and just have fun together. And this is a big fundraising and promotional event for us that we have every single year. So...
Yeah, it's really cool because the carnival is actually one of the main reasons why we were given this award, because not only of our inclusion of other Best Buddies chapters, but also because we really reach out to other members of our community, especially that have young children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So it's really awesome to be able to see everyone that comes, and a lot of these kids will be going to LHS someday. So it's really awesome to be able to just introduce them to, here's what we have here, like, here's the community that you're going to be a part of, and you're going to be so loved here. So it's just something that's really awesome to see. There are games too, and, you know, it's really awesome for the whole community.
Yeah. And so we were honored to receive this recognition from Best Buddies International last year. But we have, like I said, some of our buddies here with us today. And just last week, we had our match party, which is when the buddies find out who they're paired with for the year. And I can just already tell that with the buddies and excitement we see from them, it's just going to be another incredible year. And so we are just so honored to have been recognized as chapter of the year. And yeah, it's really attributed to our buddies because they are so, just so absolutely incredible in everything that they do within the chapter. So, thank you.
We'd like to take a moment to recognize some of the individual students who are part of the program. Zach, you want to come on up?
Dr. Kuhlendes and Brian Kelly hand certificates to the members of Best Buddies.
I just want to kind of give my perspective as a principal to the Board as well. This program is truly unique, and we don't see this in a lot of area high schools to be quite as well-developed and as central into the heart of the high school. And I think it really shows who we are as Wildcats, that all students in our school have friends and are part of our larger school community. It really, for all of our accolades and our accomplishments with athletics and fine arts and academics, this one stands shoulder to shoulder with all of those. So I'm very proud of all of these students. So we have our, our chapter president is Zachary Ford and Hannah Hutchins. So I think Mr. Kelly...
Applause as each member of Best Buddies comes up to receive their certificate.
And I believe is James Clayton here? Alexa does a lot of amazing things. I played flag football against Alexa, and she is really good. Brandon Fisher is, Brandon here? Is Kathleen Lund here? And Kathleen Manley?
She's not.
Not here, Kathleen is not here, sorry. Okay, what about Max Molten? I met John because I have a rule that if my door is open, you can come in and talk to me and introduce yourself. And one day, John came in, introduced himself to me, and we had a nice conversation. You haven't been back since?
Well, actually, when you're lying so high, you know, it kind of sounds like the little zebby, so...
That is true. And I think Emily Stone, I saw come in. Is Emily here? There's Emily. Zach, can you help me? Who did I miss?
Mallory.
Mallory, is Mallory here? There's Mallory. Chase loves graffiti art, and we have to work, Mr. Kelly, on getting a graffiti wall at Libertyville High School. It's not surprising. Your office, Tom, I like that. Conversation about that the other day. Did I miss anybody else who is here part of the program? I do also want to thank two of our staff sponsors who are here. Ms. Lindsay Restater is back here. One of the group photo before we're done?
If parents, if you guys want to come around and take a picture.
Yeah, yeah. There's no hurry here, okay?
The members of Best Buddies gather for a picture as their parents gather to take Dr. Kuhlendes, Dr. Lee, Board President Grudy, and the club advisors join the members for the picture.
Yes. Great job. Go home and do their homework.
We're going to get ice cream.
Before we leave, and I heard ice cream someplace here, but before we leave, we also want to thank parents and family members who allow us and our students to do the, you know, just phenomenal experience that all the kids have together. So students, why don't we give the parents a round of applause?
The members of Best Buddies, their parents, and the club advisors leave as the meeting continues with Board President Grudy.
So while they're all leaving on this highlight, the last month or so, I lost track of time, but I had a chance to go to Career Day at Vernon Hills, which was very good. But I also had a chance to do mock interviews last week at LHS. And one of the coolest things about LHS is when you kind of talk to the kids and ask them what it is that they did while they're in LHS and especially proud of, you hear about Best Buddies and Link Grudy and a lot of those things. It's really cool. I mean, I interviewed some fantastic kids last week, and if it wasn't for the fact that I was scheduled to do things, I'm not sure I would have gone back to work, because it's so invigorating to be there and enjoy the enthusiasm and the passion that the kids have for what they do. It's hard to go back to, it's hard to go back to work. So it's a great morning, and I applaud all you guys and everything that you do. Very motivating, to say the least, especially in today's age. All right, now for something a little different.
Very hard to follow.
Again, very hard to follow, but backed by, shall I say, popular demand, I think a topic that we get a lot of calls about, so I'm anxious to hear all the progress you mentioned.
Well, we certainly can see the powerful impact that social connections, like those forged by the Best Buddies, have on the emotional health and well-being of our students. One of the questions that we've been asked as a district over the past several years is related to the start time of the school day and the health and well-being of our students. So tonight's presentation will provide an update on the later start time task force. We'll talk a little bit about when conversations related to later start time began in the district. We'll look at some of the research related to start times and student health and well-being. And then we'll provide an update of where the task force is currently in its work. So we are now in the, having completed the second meeting for this school year of what officially became the later start time task force in the spring of last year. The group is facilitated by me, as well as Associate Principal Ray Albin from Libertyville High School and Assistant Principal Joe O'Brien at Vernon Hills High School. We're facilitating a group of about 30 people, which now includes parents and student representatives from both schools, as well as educators and administrators from both schools, as well as the district office. We first started having a conversation about later start time in pockets across the district. And the question that was asked most frequently was related to districts around us pushing start times back. Sometimes the questions came from our own students who were in the midst of projects to promote social change locally and asked why we weren't starting the school day later. So the task force convened to address these questions that really were coming in pockets across the district from our own students, from parents in the community. We heard the questions from you, our school board members, as you heard about these changes in other districts, and from our own educators who were separately studying the question on their own. So from those questions, we began to look at the issue first in school groups, gathering research and sample studies. This began as far back as two years ago. Parents came to ask questions about their student health related to start time, as long as two years ago as well. So again, these questions were being asked in pockets and examined and studied in pockets. During the last school year, we formed the D-128 Innovation Team, and there were educators from both schools who were interested in studying start time that joined the Innovation Team and began to study that as a group. When we provided you with an update on the Innovation Team last year, we discussed the efforts of that group looking at start time. When it became really clear that that group didn't want to study the issue any longer, they really wanted to implement it, we agreed in the district administration team that we needed to form a more formal task force. And so that was when we formed the group last spring and sent out an open invitation to D-128 educators and administrators to join this now formal task force charged with investigating the possible implementation of a later start time. At the end of the 2017-18 school year, that task force had met three times, had made recommendations in May that they were all on board with implementing a later start time, and that we needed then to form a group which included a broader representation of our students and our parents. And so that group formed in September of this year and has been meeting now from October 12th until just today was our second meeting. The purpose of the group is to recommend a start and an end time for the school day to implementation groups that will then study their recommendations to ensure that we have administrative support, we have support of the, we have conversations between the Teachers' Association, we look at our contract related to language regarding start time, and we do all of those things. So our present task force is really charged with just answering this question. If we believe later start is, start time is a good thing, then what will it look like in 128? What will be the start and end of the school day? And also, how will we make recommendations considering the context of that change? The Start Time Task Force has had a number of conversations about the other factors beyond the school day schedule that have an impact on student health and well-being. So that's kind of where we are at this point. We're going to move into a discussion of the research that got us here, and then we'll come back to, here are the specific steps that the task force has taken this year. So I'm going to introduce Dr. Brendan Nelson. She is our resident expert on school start times, the impact and the research of those start times on student health and well-being.
Dr. Brendan Nelson steps to the podium.
All right, thank you. I might otherwise be known as a sleep zealot or crusader. So yeah, so how are, how student well-being and later start times connected? I just want to give you a little bit of background about how I got involved in the research, not doing the research itself, but just becoming interested in it. So I, my background, I spent 10 years working in hospital mental health and then started working in schools as a one-on-one social worker, and was working at a school at the time that hit a cluster of suicides. And it really forced that school and community, and especially the mental health people, to start thinking more broadly in terms of student well-being. And that's, through a series of conversations, got us thinking on a number of levels, and one of those was sleep. And it seemed like it just was a theme that kept coming up over and over again. We talk about student stress, a lot of it comes back to sleep. When we talk about a number of things from academic performance, mental health, et cetera, sleep kind of kept coming up. Ultimately, I think it boils down to, I think, a pretty profound quote here by the Director of Sleep Medicine at the Children's National Medical Center. It says, "If you knew that in your child's school there was a toxic substance that reduced the capacity to learn, increased chances of a car crash, and made it likely that 20 years from now he or she would be obese and suffer from hypertension, you'd do everything possible to get rid of that substance and not worry about cost. Early start times are toxic." So this is from the zealot mindset. When I got to this district two years ago, started engaging in different conversations and realized, you know, no, I'm not the only one who was a sleep zealot. And so together with my counterpart at Vernon Hills and the nurses from both schools, we advocated to come to the district admin team and just say, hey, let's take a look at this research. However, knowing that I do tend to be, sort of have a crusader kind of personality, I asked myself, all right, are you really being intellectually honest here? Are you looking at this maybe with too rosy of glasses? And so I spent winter break leading up to this presentation of the research, really asking myself, all right, you're going to dig into this research and try to identify where the holes are. Is there a reason that we shouldn't, that we should not let teenagers sleep later, that we should not change school start times? And after kind of poring back through that, I could not find anything. In fact, I became even more passionate about the need to let our students sleep later. So it really boils down to some key questions. Is sleep related to physical health, emotional well-being, and academic success? If so, how and why? And then in looking at that research, how do we understand the science? How do we link it with practice? And then how do we really guide that decision-making with value? So it's not just about, hey, everybody else is doing it, so we should do it too, but really being linked to those values of looking out for our students' well-being. So these are some of the claims that come out of the later start time research. The thing I think that initially grabbed me, 1996, was when a Dyna, Minnesota, went to a later start time, they were the first ones in the country, and immediately saw higher, higher grades and better test scores. But in the research that has followed, a number of things have come to light. Schools that go, or communities with schools that have later start times have fewer car accidents, there's improved both physical and mental health. We could unpack that all night, but we'll just leave it at that. They see decreased substance abuse, decreased disciplinary issues, fewer athletic injuries, and better athletic performance. So this is the evidence, just a bullet point list of some of the sources that these claims come from. Really two bodies of research. There's the research about adolescent sleep, just in general, and the fact that it's good. And then there's the other body of research, which is about how schools go to later start times. And so obviously, they're very interconnected, but again, two different bodies of research. Really started by Mary Karskadon out of Stanford University, back really in the 70s and 80s, before we even had the FMRI technology to look at the adolescent brain and understand that it is a different creature than the child brain or the adult brain. And then, so she's really the pioneer of adolescent sleep research. And then Kyla Wallstrom at the University of Minnesota really is the core researcher when it comes to later start times, and really has been followed by Taylor &amp; Francis out of Oxford and Harvard. So ultimately, the research points to the fact that worldwide, doesn't matter the culture, the socioeconomic status, generally speaking, 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. is that circadian rhythm that adolescents follow. And it's based on, again, talked about that FMRI technology that has let us understand that the adolescent brain very much, it's just such a key time of development, really impacting emotions, impacting physical development, learning, and it's just a very, very precious and awesome time of a person's life that we need to really pay attention to and figure out how to just package that well-being and give it the best chance. out how to just package that wellbeing and give it the best chance possible. So the impact, I guess the good stuff that comes out of this is that, you know, improved mood, we see rising rates of depression and anxiety, there is absolutely no question about that in our society. Increased sleep will improve our ability to read social cues. When kids are sleep deprived, they're more likely to get in fights. I think even as adults, we see that with each other, we may be more likely to argue, more likely to take things personally. The adolescent brain, that's just all the more magnified. We also see improved attention and focus, just because when we get more sleep, there's more blood flow to the brain. So we talked about, like, athletic injuries, when there's no sleep, there's not as much blood flow here at the sides of the brain, which impacts motor coordination. And so attention and focus are super key when we're talking about learning and physical coordination. And then again, we talked about reducing risky behavior. So that is a real nutshell. I would love to go on and on about all the awesome things, and if anybody would like to talk further about it, this has just been a passion of mine for a really long time. I'm very excited that our district is taking it seriously. I get a lot, I can only imagine the number of emails that the board and our administration gets on this issue. Seems that a lot of parents are very concerned about their students' wellbeing relative to start times, and it would just be awesome if we could make this a possibility for our kids so they can thrive even more.
Rita Fisher returns to the podium.
Bring you back your questions too at the end, and thank you, Brenda. So this is exactly how the Later Start Time Task Force formed last spring when we had educators meeting together, and again, this fall when we included parents and students, was hearing Brenda's passionate review of the research that supports the change. So what progress have we made? We like to do things with our whiteboards in the district office and sticky notes. And so here's one more example of how we utilize those resources in our professional learning room. We brought together the team to take a look at some sample schedules that last year's group had mocked up. And so they spent time kind of reviewing, well, you know, we've got these several examples. We also had one blank sheet in case those who were new to the room or those who had participated previously had changed their mind about what an ideal schedule should look like. The Post-it notes represent ranking of each of those mock schedules from the members of the task force. And that's what we did at our first meeting, is we brought everyone together, we looked at some samples, and we use this then to form ourselves into teams today, based on whether we preferred one of these schedules or whether we'd like to start from scratch and design something entirely new. We had a template to design the eight periods of the day, and we plugged in time with length of the instructional period connected to the start and the end time as well. We're operating from some defined parameters. The task force is recommending an eight-period day for next year, not a hybrid schedule, a block schedule. We're operating from, we're moving perhaps to a recommendation to start the day later, but not to shake up the schedule in its entirety. That may be a question that occurs later. The Innovation Team looked at all kinds of schedules when it was just studying the issue. But the purpose of this task force is to look at start and end time, given the parameters of an eight-period day. In the discussion that we had related to these ideal schedules, members of the task force raised a number of contextual concerns and issues that are unrelated to the start and end of the school day that impact student health and wellbeing. And so we decided as a group that when we finish our work, we'll recommend what we come to consensus over regarding a start and an end day and the length of the instructional period, but we'll also contextualize that with some other remarks related to the other factors, the start and end of practice time and extracurricular events, and the, you know, the balance that students have in their lives because of the number of things that they're involved in, the amount of homework. These were all questions that were raised by the team that are related to the start time issue, but won't be resolved by the work of the task force. When this task force finishes its work, those recommendations will be just that, recommendations, as I mentioned earlier, that then will be subject to further review by administrative teams, by conversations with the Teachers' Association, and ultimately with the decision whether to recommend to you, the Board of Education, change in the start and end time of the school day. So that's where we are now. We plan to meet again on November 6th to conclude, come to consensus over start and end times, to develop this list of talking points that the group cares deeply about, and then we'll go from there. So that's the end of our presentation. Would you like to ask questions of Brenda and/or me? Brenda?
Rita, just one other comment, and you've hit both of these points, of course, nicely. And that is the holistic makeup of the group, the task force at this time. We have students, we have various staff members, we have administrators on the group. And part of the conversation as we go on during the year, as you pointed out, will be with the Teachers' Union as well, because this would have an impact on their workday. But, you know, the discussion has been great, and that will really, you know, allow us to have a really great discussion with the union as part of that process as well.
Board member Thurman asks a question.
Can either of you remind me what time we're starting and ending at currently?
Yeah. Libertyville starts at 7:30 a.m. and ends at 2:50 p.m. And Vernon Hills starts at 7:55 a.m. and ends at 3:15 p.m.
So that's half an hour, at least in that example, that's half an hour short of a school day. Ending 3:20, sorry, starting an hour later, but ending, you don't end at 3:50, you end at 3:20, just in that example. It was up on the board, right?
We, oh, we looked at a number of different examples. None of those is the, the schedule that is being drafted or recommended. All of them consider later start times, potentially, you know, shorter class periods, potentially not so much shorter class periods. So everything is on the table for discussion currently. We've not reached consensus about any of those issues.
So it could be a combination of any or all of those.
But you said, when we talked earlier about this, there is a requirement of the number of minutes a day.
Oh, none of, none of these, none of the drafts that are being studied or prepared would not meet the requirement for the length of the school day.
I have a question. When is the goal that the recommendation and ultimately it get brought to us for final decision on this? What's the date we're targeting?
We would like for this recommendation to be made in time for a date for you to approve this, if, if we went in that direction with plenty of time to communicate the decision and to implement the decision next school year.
So the goal is to get it in time, but the goal would be to implement in the fall of '18 for that school year?
Yeah. That would be the earliest we could achieve it, and we hope that the group will finish its work, the other processes will work out, and if a change is recommended, that it would happen in '18, '19.
So for, just a, for example, the group comes back to us with a recommendation a couple months, let's say, or sooner, or right after winter break, let's say. In the meantime, and following that, we would have some continuing conversation with the Teachers' Union over that and how that, you know, fits their workday in terms of that. And if we can get concordance with that, then, you know, we'll be ready to make the decision. And that can be made as part of negotiations, or that can be a standalone tentative agreement that we agree that we're going to move forward with. So we've got some options there.
As soon as the task force will finish its work is November 6th at our next meeting. If we were to come to consensus over a recommendation and develop this list of talking points, the soonest we would complete that is at the end of the November 6th meeting.
I just have a question. I don't know if there's an answer to this, but as you're looking at the research, is there a ranking of when the sleep happens versus how much the sleep is?
A ranking? What do you mean by ranking?
Like, important to the kid's sleep from 11 till 8 versus 10 till, yeah, I mean, versus how much sleep they get.
Right.
So are they shooting off for nine hours or for, it happens at this particular time?
So the American Academy of Pediatrics says nine hours and 15 minutes is how much sleep adolescents need. And then the circadian rhythm is the roughly 11:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And so it's both the slot in the clock, right, as well as the amount.
So is there, in your mind, is there one that if you had to kind of give or take with one or the other, you, like, well, I mean, the only thing you have control over is the time it starts, I guess.
Right. So I feel like, yeah, I mean, I think that that's a really good question, because it's like, okay, why don't kids just go to bed earlier, right? But that circadian rhythm is super key because most, and that's not to say all teenagers, the vast majority of teenagers, their bodies want to stay awake until roughly, you know, 11 o'clock, and, you know, certainly later as well. But that, right now, they don't even, we don't even give them the opportunity of that window. And so this, by changing start times, at least they can achieve the possibility of that slot, right? There's a lot of other considerations that, that need to be taken into consideration, but that, that would allow them to get the quantity, to get them all the REM cycles, as we say, to get to the point where their brain and bodies are both fully recovered from the day.
Hey, more recent research, since it's sort of a new, a new thing that visits sleeping with the phone in the room versus, and I'm saying that for adults and everybody, and it actually has a pretty big impact.
Yeah, do you have, well, do you have?
No. I mean, I would think so.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a part of the. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, there's a lot, there's, there's good research about the backlight, the blue light in, in phones and how that impacts. So even if, you know, you're, we're looking at our phones before bed, that the brain, even if we actually fall asleep, we don't really fall asleep until about 30 minutes. But, you know, the recommendation is that phones be away for about an hour prior to bedtime to really let the body and brain start to fall into sleep, so.
It's interesting, because speaking of a person who has a, a kid in college, everybody goes to bed with those, they're their alarm clocks.
Yeah.
So, interesting question, say at least.
It's becoming more more complex now.
Would we be looking to have both schools on the same start and stop time? Because basically Vernon Hills is already a half hour, and I think, I'm sure one of your alternatives is looking around that 7:55, 8:15 timeframe that Vernon Hills is already on, so would, would you try to, because there was issue with buses before.
Well, the genesis of that, as it was in many school districts back in the day, was that we were sharing buses between District 73 and Vernon Hills, and then Libertyville and 70. And so buses would have to do one route and then go off and do another route. So in order to make the buses work, the two schools developed those schedules so they could do the bus sharing that they needed to do. We're no longer doing that with the current bus company, was able to adjust. So we have the flexibility to put both schools on the same time schedule, and, and that would be, I, I think, as the superintendent of the district, that's what I would want to recommend, because the research would still be valid if we made that decision for both schools, right? So one of the logistic dynamics that, that of course has to be, you know, figured out is can we still do the busing, right? We could have a great schedule, but if we can't get the kids here without adding $100,000 to cost to the school district, or, you know, half a million or whatever it would be, that could interject another significant issue in the conversation. It looks like right now that, you know, we can move forward with that and hopefully be accommodated. But as they get closer to a schedule, then we'll work with the bus company and make sure that we can do that, obviously.
Yes, preliminary questions last year about that as well, but the, the task force was really challenged with, should the, the start times be the same? Should they be different? I'll tell you the drafts they're exploring right now, they're looking at the same for both schools.
Makes sense.
We should also make sure we, we at least ask the question about the traffic on 176 an hour later, too, because my guess is it could be even worse than it is at 6:45, 7:00. But let's see, let's just make sure we ask the question and involve the police department and other, and those in the conversations.
Those are all outside of the purview of the task force, right? No, I, so that's what we've told the task force is design your, your optimal schedule, and then it will move out of there to some of these, but the cost making and the decision making. We've also invited the members of the task force to be available for questions that follow their recommendations, right? So we, we've said that they're recommending an optimal start and end time, but there may be times when we want to reconvene the task force, because during the implementation, we've learned something that maybe we want their feedback on as well.
You wouldn't sacrifice the late start day, would you?
Well, the current conversation is if it's, if the late time were consist, if the starter time, the starting time were later consistently every day, would there be a need for an even later start date?
Presumably, you could do some of that.
Start time.
Yeah, you would have a gap in the morning in, in the teacher's normal workdays about, those would be some of the logistics we would work out with the association.
We wouldn't, we would not want to sacrifice teacher collaboration time, but we would have the conversation of whether that would fit within the later start each day that we were proposing.
Or how to do it.
How to do it, right.
Right. So, yeah, I think we can.
That is, so when we talk about values, that is one of the values that we hold and that we would not sacrifice to achieve this later start time. We would not want to give up teacher collaboration opportunities.
And what Rita says, we, she's really talking about the teachers too, because that's become an integral part of what we do. So it's not just an administrative.
The we is, the we is we.
Directive, that's something that we agree to coming out of bargaining the last time. We had, both had a vested interest in that, it's worked really well. So we would work together collectively, we would go this direction, and figure out how to best do that and still meet the needs for teachers and administrators to collaborate in the best interest of our students. Where does that might take us?
As principal, obviously, I understand there's a lot of factors we need to consider, but I'm most interested in the impact that would have upon our students' health and wellness. And I'm just wondering if you guys have any general kind of reflections about what you're hearing? I think Madison, you're actually on the committee, just from a, I know you don't speak for all students, but just some general reactions to what you heard?
Personally, for me, I go to bed at like 12 o'clock, whether I'm done with my homework or not, because it's the point like I'm tired, I can't really focus anymore, so I'm just going to sleep till we start. So like, I'll be getting an hour, an hour and a half more of sleep, so for me, it'd be better. And I feel like I work better in the morning as well, so like, on late start days, I actually get up at normal time and just work on homework, because I'm more productive in the morning, so to say, I go to bed earlier. So for me, like, I can get up early and work on my homework and go to bed earlier. So I don't know, for me, it's, I prefer.
Yeah, and I guess, from my perspective, I usually work after school on average, like 15 to 20 hours a week, so I like often get home at like 7:30 or 8 o'clock, so that would definitely be something I value a ton, just because at night I find myself just, when I do work on my studies, I oftentimes am just very tired and simply not 100% of my best effort, so just not necessarily having that time to do homework longer, but to be able to kind of take that time to rest and be ready, I guess, for the next morning. And plus, I find that too, like Madison said, on late start days, I am just like a lot more alert, and sometimes having had been awake for, let's say, maybe an hour hypothetically, like before getting to class, versus rolling out of bed and like speeding over to school, you're a lot more attentive in class, definitely come here first period, so.
I will add that Madison's contributions around the table were vital in helping us to make some suggestions and tweak a few things. Her insights are really appreciated, so. The inclusion of students in the group has made a much more rich conversation than we had last, last spring without them.
One more? Go ahead.
Well, I think it's interesting, because I'm actually learning about this in psychology right now, so I never actually knew the scientific reasons behind it all, but it actually just makes a lot of sense in learning about like the circadian rhythm and our REM sleep and like stage four sleep, and if we don't have enough time to reach it, then there's really no way of achieving it. So, I, I mean, I agree with them, later start time obviously would be beneficial just for our ability to be alert and get things done for the next day.
I have a question. Is there any data associated with tardiness and when school starts?
Generally speaking, or from our schools?
Generally speaking.
Yeah, well, yeah, the research demonstrates, like, if, if you look at schools who then report out about making the switch, like in their first year, they definitely notice reduced tardies, and reduced absences in general, so.
Anecdotally though, we do see just as many kids late on late starts as we should run. They tell there's a streak.
Probably the same kids, right?
It would have been.
Maybe due to the traffic, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's just the nature of kids.
Yeah. I think it'll be interesting though in two ways, because number one, so if you're going to go to bed at the same time and you're going to get up an hour later, like say, essentially your work day and work week is about five hours shorter. And it'll be interesting because you won't get a start on your homework until potentially an hour later because you're not going to get out of practice until later, blah, 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 so. It'll be interesting to see if that counteracts any of the benefits. I don't know if it helps, more sleep is probably better, but five hours, that's, that's not an insignificant amount of time if that was true, it's like one day.
That's right. That's like one day.
My last comment, listen, I, this is, my perception is, you know, this horse is out of the gate or the train's out of the station, it's moving down. So I would just encourage all of us to keep to the timeframes that you want. Obviously, there's some administrative things that need to happen to make this happen, but get the goal so we can implement next year. And you've done a nice job being inclusive and getting different kinds of inputs. These guys know me a little bit now, now it's time to get the decision and let's go.
Yeah, I guess I'll ask, let me ask the question that way, do you guys believe it's inevitable we're going to do this, or is there still some further study we got to do before we make a final call? I mean, I understand there's a lot of details, but.
I would say everyone on the task force, and remember I said the task force was an open invitation, in the innovation team, when the conversations began, these were people who were interested in the concept of a later start time. Once we moved to this task force, the invitation was open to any educator who wanted to be a part of the conversation. We hope to get those who didn't have their mind made up about a later start time, or maybe were opposed to it, to be part of the conversation. And I think we have some of those participants. At this point, everyone on the task force is supportive of a later start time.
All right. Great job. Thank you very much. Thank you. After applause, the meeting continues with President Pat Groody.
All right, that's the school board, group board.
Yeah, absolutely, so Libertyville, I think you go ahead and start. Sorry, you're going to hear from me a lot tonight. So in regards to athletics, cross country and track star Melissa Manich was nominated for Chicago Tribune Athlete of the Month. And on that note, girls cross country placed fifth in conference and second in regionals this past weekend, and Melissa Manich ran and placed as an invite champion. And also, for boys cross country, Alex Cam placed first in regional race this past Saturday as well. This past Friday night, Librivo Boys Football won the last home game with a score of 43 to 20 against Zion Benton. And also soccer this past Saturday won regionals for the fourth year in a row, and the team will play tomorrow night at Wheeling against, or I'm sorry, play Wheeling in the sectional semis tomorrow night at Fromm High School. Senior Max Johnson ran the Chicago Marathon on Sunday, October 8th, which was actually the day after a homecoming, and he raised over $1,500, all of which he donated towards Advocate Charitable Foundation to fund brain cancer research.
Did he go to homecoming?
He did.
He left early, like.
Yeah.
He left early to go to bed.
Huh? That's impressive.
Yeah, he was at the dance and he left early, he said, I have to go home early to go to bed for the marathon tomorrow.
Yeah, his date was on the homecoming court, so I think he walked her down and went home to go to bed, but. So also in regards to homecoming, Alex just successfully celebrated their centennial homecoming on the week of October 7th. And to kick off the week, some of the festivities included the Potter Puff Game, which was on Wednesday night, where we saw some of our senior girls in their team play each other out on the football field. Nearly all LHS students gathered Friday after school for the Puff Assembly. And at this assembly, 16 males making up our honor court, which were all selected by coaches and teachers to escort the 16 ladies on the homecoming court. And at the assembly, Olympic gymnast Laura Zang, which crowned homecoming queen. That evening, Librivo Football defeated Mundline at home. The morning of homecoming Saturday, October 7th, various clubs and classes built floats and paraded through downtown Librivo for the annual homecoming parade. As part of the homecoming celebration Saturday morning, LHS alumni had the chance to tour the school, seeing just how things have changed since their, since their years at LHS. In the evening of the dance, LHS best buddies, the executive board organized their own homecoming group, where students with disabilities were welcomed at the dance more than ever. Illinois Music Education Association selected 29 LHS students across from choir, band and orchestra to be a part of their respective ensembles. And this is a huge honor for all the students who were selected just because of the amount of practice and the hours they spend kind of mastering their skills. And then LHS in Vernon Hills students, ceramic students got to take a field trip this past week outside actually LHS where they were able to put some of their ceramic creations into, not their kiln that our teachers made, where their creations were fired to over 1,800 degrees, and then when they were taken out of the kiln and placed to dry, the students were kind of developed this glaze that made them just truly amazing. I saw some of them, they're pretty incredible.
All right, and then to follow, for in humans physiology classes recently, the students carved pumpkins to show where skull bones are on like people, and they display them in the LHS courtyard, so it's very festive and everyone gets to learn from it. Also mentioned earlier that LHS held mock interviews on Thursday, October 19th for consumer management and personal finance classes get like a feel for an interview, so it's a really good like training for the students. And then the LHS Student Council is hosting a canned food drive, so our student council members are running around the school, surprising classes, throwing out t-shirts so you get everyone pumped up for the canned food drive and promote it. On a note for the centennial, we had speakers Ike Riley and Tom Morello come visit LHS and speak, who are LHS alumni, and their presentation was really awesome, actually they had a really open dialogue and were very honest about like their time at LHS, the good and the bad, and it was really interesting to hear like how much LHS has changed for the better and it made me like really appreciate how it's grown. And then as Zachary mentioned, we had the open house, and around the schools, pictures displayed of like the old, old events at LHS and new, and again, it's cool to see how it's grown, like the pictures in black and white versus like some of our friends now, it's really interesting. This week, we're celebrating Red Ribbon Week, which is for alcohol and drug prevention. And this past Friday, like the Wildcat hosted an event to decorate the school, which looks phenomenal, it's really awesome, and just like get excited for the week. And then various activities are following this week, including like a health fair in the library, all to promote wellbeing, living drug and alcohol free. And then lastly, the French exchange students are here visiting, they leave this Friday, that's where Lola has her student right now, so she's spending time with her. And they're visiting school, I know they went to six fives this Saturday, and it's really exciting to get to interact with them.
Student School Board Representative Kelsey Carrino.
So I'm just going to try to go through this really quick because I'm about to go back on stage.
You have your lights on?
Yeah, I have my gun right now.
Can they hear us down there?
I made sure to turn it off, so just in case, because I was, yeah.
Careful what you say here.
Yeah. Okay, so I was just going to say a couple things, um, so we kind of really.
If you need to go, you need to go.
Yeah, I'm like about to go, I was just saying quick. Okay, so we had a really good homecoming turnout, we had the highest number of kids attended that we have ever had, we had over 850 kids at homecoming, which is really awesome. It was largely due to the fact of our student council, executive board having really good plans for the whole week. Our theme was carnival, so during one of the days in our lunch period, we had carnival games set up and the whole school was decorated really nicely, so everyone was really excited about that. We also had lunch and learn for, we have those, I think, a couple of times, like a couple times a month or something, every other month. And they'd speak about different topics, and this topic that we had a couple weeks ago was a lunch and learn for the Uganda trip, and so the people that went on the Uganda trip got to talk about our experience and we had a slideshow and a video, and we taught all the teachers about what we learned and stuff, and a lot of them thought it was really valuable, so it was a really cool experience. I got to speak at that lunch and learn as well, so it was cool. And then we had a lot of students make it to ILMEA district for choir, we had Jenny Williams, Nikki Madonovich, Darby Barnett, Kelsey Carrino, Kaylee Brand, Micah Kim, Stephen Pastar, Valerie Black, Julian Bose, Chris Phil Chen, and Jackson Knechnik for band, we had 10 people. And then for orchestra, we had Juan Ariel Chau. And then musical is this Friday and Saturday, 7:00 p.m., it's curtains, I think it's a really good show, it's awesome, and you guys should come, it's this week and next week. And then Julian Bose was actually auditioned and got accepted to National Association for Music Education, all national choir. So at the end of this month, she gets to travel to Disney World for five days, and I looked it up, there are three kids from Illinois that are there, which is really cool, so she's one of them representing the state. For sports, Gulf made it downstate and finished 10th. Girls cross country, we were the conference champions, and they're getting prepared to compete at regionals, hopefully sectionals and state again too. And then boys cross country were regional champions, and they compete at Cayland on this Saturday, both boys and girls, for the sectional meet. And then freshman Magdalena Zusek won the gold medal at the Shoredakon Karate World Championships in Italy, which was really cool. And then Snowflake, we had a couple of students from our school be leaders for that, which is really cool because they get to be paired up with some of their old middle school teachers as well as be an example for the kids at the middle schools for this kind of program that teaches trophy awareness and healthy lifestyle living. Max Ratner was, he's a senior and one of the leaders, and he said that I find the experience extremely nostalgic and rewarding to be able to give back the entertaining and learning experience I encountered as an eighth grader back to the kids this year as a leader. If I had the chance, I would definitely do it again. And we have a lot of relationships with the middle schools. Fine arts kids go and perform in orchestra and choir, we have Spark that goes to the middle school every year and performs skits for them, and so it's really important that we maintain these relationships with the kids at the middle schools because they're the ones feeding here, so it's really good that we have a positive relationship with them. And then we have the Cougar Class Act, teachers nominated kids that exhibited above and beyond behaviors that add to the community of the school. Students were honored at a reception on Friday, and they have their photos on the wall in the school for, I think, a month, and this happens four times a year, which is really cool. And then we had 12 new students inducted into National Honor Society. So we had an induction ceremony really similar to the one that we had at the end of the year last year, and kind of the same thing just to give seniors that didn't have a chance to apply, a chance to apply and get on this year, which is a really cool thing that we do as well.
Student Representative Frances Farolo.
We also had our annual Rite Assembly, so Mike Donahue presented his message, walk a mile in someone else's shoes for the freshman class. So he basically talked about our tendency to jump to conclusions about other people and how we should try to avoid that and rather think about the challenges they may be going through. And four seniors presented their stories at the assembly, each one focused on one of the different letters of Rite, so it's R, Respect, I, Integrity, T, Trust, and then E, Experience. So we use this acronym because we believe if we encourage those traits at our school, then everyone will have a good experience in the long run. Then there's an open mic opportunity at the end of the presentation where freshmen can go up and share part of their story with the rest of their class. So that went really well, there was a lot of participation again. So personally, I was a small group leader, which means I led a small group through discussions throughout the day, and I really liked that because I like to hold the position that freshmen look to in what can be a really emotional day if you really get into it. And I really like doing it because I remember the role my senior leader played, and you need to really make a welcoming environment so people are willing to share. Also, sitting in the auditorium, hearing Mike Donahue's presentation again, kind of let everything come full circle, and it challenged me to see if I upheld the goals I set for myself as a freshman at the Rite Assembly. And then at the end of the year, Mike Donahue's going to come back and give this presentation to the whole senior class, so they'll go through that same experience that I just had. So then our Student Diversity Council debrief, debrief the freshmen about the Rite Assembly, and they talk about how they want to like work on inclusion in our school and do so by spreading those four Rite acron, like letters. And some students presented personal stories, sharing ways they think the school can still improve. They ended the day by challenging students to step outside of their comfort zone and talk to students they don't normally talk to to just gain more knowledge of their classmates.
Board President Pat Groody.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, great job, thanks for all your hard work. Next, your attendance report.
Okay, thanks, Pat. We'll start with more good news about our students and staff tonight. The District 128 Special Olympians hosted the Area 318 Bachi Ball Tournament at BHHS on October 1st. Congratulations to our athletes who earned their gold medal and are now qualified for the state summer games in Bloomington next June. In singles, Krista Rose, Erin Catterland, Hope Mcilady, Benny Roberts, Anna Scholler, in a doubles, Chris Rose, and Alexa Donato. And if you'd like to play bachi ball and you want a challenge, they will be happy to take you on. I will assure you that you will be on the losing end of that, they are very, very good. District 128 Special Olympian Mallory Marvin has been chosen as an alternate for Team USA at the USA Summer Games in Seattle, Washington, July 1 through 6, 2018. This is an amazing honor, congratulations, Mallory. Following students were named LHS September Students of the Month, Jenna Grayson, Gina Sylvester, Emily Regan, Danielle Navarro, Alex Barrera, Noah Pant, Tess Von Ruden, Ainsley Lumsberry, Will McGill, and Aiden Hackett. 11 BHHS students were October recipients of the Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award. Recipients were nominated for going above and beyond, for being compassionate and encouraging individuals, and for being exceptional representatives of Cougar values. Congratulations to Bayasa Havenhirva, Maddie Fernandez, Mariah Cunningham, Jenna Helmick, Kelsey Carrino, Chase Johnson, Caleb Smith, Jeremy Brazan, Sebastian Dominic, Scott Harris, and Nick Beaumont. The LHS Bass Fishing Team swept Stevenson High School by capturing first, second, and third places in our Fall Dual Meet on Diamond Lake. The team of Ryan Muller and Kenny Herman captured first place with four bass weighing six pounds and 10 ounces. Second place went to the team of Joey Visine, Jackson Payton, and Ryan Harney, and third place went to the team of Matthew Paluga and Cooper Bailiff. The following LHS and BHHS students were selected to the IMEA, or Illinois Music Education Association, District 7 festivals. And just underscoring again the strength of our fine arts program, this is a pretty extensive list from both schools again. From LHS, Sebastian Agino in band, David Lee in orchestra, Alexandria Hibbert Brown in choir, Thomas Power in jazz, Elias Anderson in jazz, Ian Nagel in band, Elise Heides in orchestra, Ian Smith in band, Dora Tucker in orchestra, and Elisa Waddick in band in jazz, Beck Gontos in jazz, Chris Martin in band, Richard Zhao in orchestra, Will Neeson in choir, Jacob Dekelski in band in jazz, Ben Mayo in choir, Philip Nauman in choir, Jack Gover in jazz, Laura Randolph in choir, Anna Herrins in orchestra, Alan Lu in choir, Albert Sternor in choir, Jessica Srod in choir, Will Anderson in choir, Melissa Manich in band, Ainsley Lumsberry in band, Carter Smith in band, Matt Newberger in band, and Meredith Golden in orchestra. And from BHHS, Bobby Black in band, Patrick Chung in band, Cece Gao in band, Samantha Culver in band, Joshua Lu in band, Jeffrey Zhang in band, Ethan Xiao in band, Ariel Chow in orchestra, Drake DeBoer in orchestra, Hannah Merrick in orchestra in jazz, Nikki Maninovic in orchestra, Cindy Pan in orchestra, Timothy Zhang in orchestra, Darby Barnett in choir, Donnelly Black in choir, Julian Bose in choir, Kaylee Brand in choir, Kelsey Carrino in choir, Isabel Chin in choir, Micah Kim in choir, Jason Niznik in choir, Stephen Pastar in choir, and Jenny Williams in choir. So again, congratulations to everyone. After the district festivals in November, the top students from each of the nine ILMEA districts will be selected to the ILMEA State Festival in January. Being selected to the ILMEA State Festival is the highest individual honor a high school musician can receive. We are so proud that so many District 128 students were selected to the district and look forward to hearing about the many that will be selected to participate in the state festival. So again, congratulations to our just rock and fine arts program at both high schools. BHHS Junior Nicholas Dantes will perform in the Marriott Theater cast of Newsies. The show will run at the Marriott Lincolnshire from October 25th to December 31st. And finally, good news tonight, BHHS 2013 graduate Sean Ricky recently signed a record deal with Humans Were Here Records owned by Plain White Tees founder and frontman Tom Higginson. Higginson. Sean is a member of the Chicago-based rock band Fairview. The band is set to finish recording and begin a tour with Plain White Tees this spring. So that's pretty amazing. So maybe he will be coming back hopefully in 20 years to talk to students like our former graduate musicians and writers did recently. So that concludes the additional good news this evening again. Congratulations to everyone. Just a quick update on the LHS pool. It's moving along. So as I think most people are aware, we have construction fenced up and a gate and they began tree removal last week and clearing the property and initial moving while we're waiting for some additional permitting from a state agency to actually be dig- to be able to dig further in the ground and relocate utility lines. That should be forthcoming in a week or so. I think we're thinking it's about a two-week process normally. So very excited about that. Project beginning to move forward and take shape. Definitely looks different if you've been by with a tree removal. But we want to underscore one important thing, we love trees at District 128, okay? So to take any tree down is not something that we do lightly. We've worked collaboratively with the village and their officials for really the last four years on that process. And ultimately, we will be planting 94 new trees and a large number, 273 green plantings and 88 additional shrubs on the property as, you know, replacement of some of the trees. So we appreciate the villages working with us on that process and again, very collaborative process. And it started with us working with them and then hiring our arborists to actually take all the trees and identify them, then working through a process and two village committees and then final approval as part of the overall site development plan for the pool. So anyway, process, projects moving along. I want to thank Mark for his work with the village and with the contractor and also Gil Bain. And as Steve said, Steve Mitchell said earlier this evening, it's just really exciting that the bids came in favorable and we were able to do some of the alternate bids, which will really kind of dot the i across the t on the project. So that will be really exciting when we get done. So any other questions on the pool project at this time? Okay, great. The 100th legislature, the legislators will be going back for veto session here shortly. For a short period of time, there's usually not a lot of legislation generated out of that. We are still waiting for clarification on some of the legislation that was passed last time, certainly as it released Senate Bill 1947, as we get more information from our professional associations and ISVE and the State Board of Education. Well, of course, we'll share that with the board and the community moving forward. Brand memorial update. If you've been by the memorial, it's nice. I mean, I think it looks really good. We're waiting for the bronze cast plaque to come back. It'll again, kind of dot the i across the t on the project, but the basic part, main part of the project was done in time for the 100th anniversary celebration. So it's a nice opportunity for people to go over and take a look at that as part of a remembrance. And it is definitely visible from 176 if you look down that way. So again, thanks to Mark and the crew for working on that and moving and Mary for moving that along and their help with that. Okay, any other questions about the Raider Memorial? Okay, we did have one FOIA request this month and as the state requires now, we are reading those as a record and then we're estimating an amount of time to comply with that. So on 10/5/17, we received a request from Kirk Allen of American Watch Dogs Incorporated in Paris, Illinois. They requested, one, a copy of all debt currently held by the school district in any form to include but not limited to lines of credit, financial institution bonds, credit card. Two, a copy of all payment structures for that debt that reflects principal payment, interest payment, and the timeframe of those obligations. Three, a copy of all compensation provided to the superintendent. Four, a copy of the superintendent's employment contract. Five, a copy of the minutes and agenda where the superintendent's contract was approved. Follow-up responsibility was Dan Stanley and Bryant. And the deadline for response was 10/12 and our response date was also on 10/12. And I don't know if we had an estimate on the time that you guys spent with that, but most of that, as the board aware, is publicly available. And this is, does that mean like none or, you know, it was easy?
The first two were really easy.
Okay. So yeah, because the numbers are zeros. So reporting that out. These types of reports from a group like this will go to all 868 school districts in the state and they gather, you know, a base of information to share with anyone moving down. So it's not abnormal. I do want to point out with FOIA requests, and we haven't mentioned this for a while, that with FOIA requests, we do not have a legal obligation to create new reports for FOIA requests. So we don't have to go out and create a brand-new spreadsheet and have Dan spend and a business office staff spend, you know, two weeks creating a document, pulling that. So it really revolves around information that we have available that we can share. Because we are very transparent here, for example, we are one of the few districts that we know of anywhere in the state, we actually post all of our administrator contracts, the whole contract. And we're not required to do that by the state. So because we attempt to be very transparent here, much of this information, we can just direct people to the website on. Say, just go to the website, there it is. You know, we don't have anything, you know, we're very open and transparent. So just as a reminder of that. Okay, any questions on the FOIA requests? And then we have one donation acknowledgement tonight, which we always appreciate. And we want to thank Mr. Ralph Bornhof. And we want to acknowledge receipt of a very generous donation of $13,092 Libertyville High School Choir. This is a free will donation. No gifts or services have been received by Mr. Bornhart in return. You know, obviously, that's, you know, a significant donation. Dustin Halby, supervising Libertyville High School Fine Performing Arts Department, is purchasing six music library storage systems with the donation. The LHS choir music staff and other music groups at the high school will benefit greatly from this addition for many years to come. So again, thanks for Mr. Bornhof for thinking about Libertyville High School and the students there. We always appreciate that. Okay, I have no other tonight, so we may move on to the rest of the agenda.
Thank you. Consent vote agenda is listed. We approved or reviewed it earlier this month. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
Second.
Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, Chairperson.
Okay, we have first board policies up for second reading adoption. We've got, how many listed? Five listed. There have been no changes since the last time we looked at those. Does anyone have questions about that? We're looking for a motion to approve those policies as listed.
Approve the board policies as listed after the second reading adoption.
Second. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
And the other, we have none, sorry to sign off, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's see, and Chairman Bass is absent, we'll just move right. Kevin, you can take her.
Sure, the facilities and finance committee didn't indeed meet. First order of business was the 2017 tax levy discussion dates an estimate. I believe we set a date of October 30th?
Correct.
For, and we highly encourage all the public who wants to talk about the levy do, join us on the 30th. I'll turn it over to Dan for further comment.
Yep, we mentioned under the estimate, so part of, we'll go into more of this in detail on the 30th, but one of the laws in Illinois is called Truth in Taxation Act. And what that law requires is that before the board can adopt its annual tax levy, at least 20 days before you make that, take that action, the board has to estimate their levy. Now, the purpose of that is basically to figure out, the board has to determine whether or not their levy is going to be an increase of more than 5% basically, of more than 5% than what they got last year. And if, and so you do that 20 days early and if you realize, I am going to ask, if, you know, if the board realizes we are going to ask for more than 5%, then there's a number of other things you have, there's a number of other steps you have to take. If you decide you don't have to, you're going to be under the 5%, there's less steps you have to take essentially. So that's really what this is to kind of show you. So I have a document here passing out to kind of show you the estimate based on the information that we know. You don't need to, I'm not really going to walk you through how this works right now. We'll do that really on the 30th, but essentially, all the key numbers are there. At this point from the county, we're estimating that overall EAV is increasing about 4.9%. CPI that we know, which is the rate of inflation that we can operate under for this tax levy is 2.1%. We are estimating the new construction at about 13,000.
13 million.
13 million, thank you. We, a couple of weeks ago, came in and got numbers from the county that were 24 million, which is true. However, we realized, as we kind of dug more in, 11 million of that are in TIF zones, that we can't access that money. The idea is that you will be able to access it eventually, once those TIFs expire and come back quote-unquote on the rolls, but that won't be till these TIFs expire. And I don't know yet enough about those TIFs to know when they'll expire. Essentially, the 11 million is going to be the two retirement homes that were built. One is on Waikiki Road in Atkinson, is that the road?
Yeah.
And then the other one is on 176 just west of the interstate.
Jamaica Gardens. Those are both in Green Oaks, so they've got TIFs.
That's really the two big ones. There's a couple that are within our district that makes up the 13 million that are particularly like Cojulios is now coming on the rolls. There was another one.
That's pretty fair size.
Oh, the outpatient center at Condell, that was it. So that's in there, that's a chunk of that, too. The vast majority of it was going to residential improvements throughout the taxing district. So those are the numbers that we know. And so based on, you know, you're limited by PTAL, this tax cap law essentially limits how much your extension can grow. Based on the 2.1% of the 13 million, it's estimated that you'll be capped at the 2.5%. And I don't see, there's no information that I see that is going to put us anywhere near having to ask 4, 5%. So that's really the purpose of estimating is to figure out, are you going to be at that 5 or asking for more? That's not going to happen. Now, this is, these are really final numbers here to show you, but it's really to kind of illustrate that example and show you the estimate based on the information that we know.
So one key point that Dan made, okay? The board has not, has not made a final decision on the levy yet. This is part of a legal process that we have to go through. As Kevin mentioned earlier, there will be a special board meeting this coming Monday on October 30th at, I think, 6:00 PM Denise, did we set that up for 6:00, I think? At 6:00 PM at district office on the tax levy. And in our district, for the past several years, we've had stand-alone meetings, at least a couple on the budget and at least one on the tax levy, so the board can simply focus on that issue for the evening. So we are doing what's been required based on the information that we have right now. And then the board will have further discussion on the tax levy at the meeting in October and we may or may not have a final sense coming out of that meeting of where we at, where we're at, but I suspect that we probably will have direction and then we will be reporting that back out to the board. Pat, do you want to add anything?
Okay.
So we got the tax levy then? Good, okay. And again, that meeting on October 30th is open to the public.
Yes.
We don't go to executive session, so we really highly encourage the public to attend if they so choose.
Sure.
We did talk about a bid, I believe, for the auditorium balcony renovation. So Mark, you want to walk us through that, please?
Yes. I took one last look at that this week.
You did?
Yes, I did. Reminiscent. How long would it take to replace that? It looks as bad as it ever did just now.
Would you like a little piece when it's all over?
All right, Mark, so we're going to fix that, right?
We're going to fix it, yes. So the administration is recommending to award a bid for LHS auditorium balcony renovation to Stupi Construction Company in the amount of $52,250. So for a little background information on the project, the balcony at LHS in the auditorium is covered with carpet. So we'll be removing the carpet, we'll be prepping the wall, painting the wall, and then we will be installing sound deflectors on the face. So the sound will actually mix better in the auditorium instead of being absorbed into the old carpet.
And you'll have to look at the carpet.
Board Member Kevin Huber.
I'm sure it was a wonderfully thought-out solution back then.
Just make sure you cover the chairs when you're up.
I make the motion that we accept the bid from Stupi Construction, the amount of $52,250 presented.
Second.
Any discussion? No, roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Groody.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, final items. See other, any other items from our CFO, superintendent?
I think we're good.
All right, thanks.
Property, Groody?
Just a quick reminder, we've been asked to assess the possibility of the district acquiring a property off of Diamond Road in Libertyville. This is just south of 176 on the west side. We are in the process of working with Mark and Rick as it relates to due diligence with the thought that possibly that property might be utilized for parking or other means. That process is ongoing and a recommendation will be coming soon.
And if that were to move forward, so there was some discussion about the zoning and stuff like that? I mean, I know we had a discussion with the village on that, right? But I'm assuming we would clarify all that before we would make any moves if we chose to do so.
If we chose to do so, yes. So I've had an initial discussion with the village and our options as for zoning of the property. The zoning, all the property around that is zoned commercial presently. And to the south of the property is the easement for the, it was the old railway, so it's a bike path. So this one little lot stands out as residential. So we will delve into it deeper with the village, but there was recommendation to change it to commercial and we just need to verify that we would be able to maximize the putting parking on.